Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole minutes will be postponed until the next meeting.
They have to do it because there is actually, there were actually.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman.
First item on the agenda.
Trustee Compass.
I move to postpone the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the committee of the whole of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Elevated tank number eight and number ten rehabilitation bid award. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I move to recommend to the village board to accept the base bid from Era Valdivia of Chicago, Illinois, and award a contract in the amount of two million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars, plus a hundred thousand dollar contingency for a total amount not to exceed two million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Well, well, the one thing I will say is that, um, so we have, uh, seven water towers in total. We decided the last two years, had to do one every year. Is the mic not on? Oh, maybe closer. Sorry for the delay there. Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
There are seven altogether. We had told, we had planned on doing one every year, and we've amped that up to, um, we did, uh, we did, uh, one for two years, and then we did two, and then we're doing two next year, and then we're doing the last one, and the last one's a really big one, which is where?
It's on Wolf Road, maybe about, I don't know.
Okay, and all the others will have been done after next year, so, um, and anybody who's looked at those that haven't been done know that they're in pretty rough shape, so, uh, both inside and out. This should last over twenty years, which is, uh, which is great, because, uh, again, it's another capital project that kind of piled up on the village, and, uh, we're getting these off so that, uh, we can be in a steadier state come four or five years from now for ten or fifteen years. So, uh, that's why we're doing this, and, uh, happy that we can get this done. Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Village center soffit repairs, glazing replacement, and exterior joint ceiling, ITB two-two dash zero four eight.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Move recommend to the village board approving, approve, awarding ITB twenty-two dash zero four eight to Industria, Inc. of Des Plaines, Illinois, for amount not to exceed two million, six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents, which is two million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy, plus a five percent contingency for, of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
And this is under budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The base bid was under budget. Uh, the two alternatives that we wanted it to do, uh, got us about sixty K above it, uh, but we did budget it for all this work for next year.
Right, right, but it was, uh, three million we were planning on this, right? Or call?
But still about the two point five last year, what we were.
Okay. So, just so everyone knows that this has been, uh, what, since, uh, since this was built in eighty-nine? And, uh, unfortunately, it's a drywall soffit system, and, uh, we can't really afford to change that system. The good news is that the dry, the exterior drywall is way better today than it was back then, so it should last longer than it did this time. Unfortunately, when this was built, it became about appearance and not functionality and, and, uh, quality, because they were over budget, as we've heard from many stories about, which predates many of us. Um, uh, even the people that were on the board previously predates them all, so, um, uh, so we're doing the best we can with what we have, but that we, obviously, we have to get all these things done, and it's a pretty expensive project, but we can't have mold and that type of thing, so we have to get it taken care of.
I, I have two slides if you want to see why, you know, basically, uh, what you said, and I'll just kind of show you. Uh, if, if people know their roof systems, this is kind of a typical roof system. You have roof vents, uh, at the bottom of the roof, and allows the air to flow in your attic space to create that dry air, uh, and then it vents, uh, usually at the top of the roof. That's a typical home that has that. What, why you have the insulation in your home is to provide that difference between a, uh, different temperature of attic space versus your living space. Next slide, please. So, in our condition of the soffits, um, we have a space in, with the soffits where no airflow has, was occurring. Uh, the, the drywall was completely across, and therefore, that circulation of dry air wasn't occurring. So what happened was, uh, we have a warm or, or air-conditioned space inside and vice versa on the outside, um, and without the proper insulation there, there was some heat transfer, uh, heat, um, and cooling occurring, and when that happens, moisture occurs. Like Mayor mentioned, uh, that creates mold and, uh, pockets where water drips, and then it damages the soffits. So by working with the A and E, we know that, that system a little bit better, and providing this fix so that we create that nice, cool, uh, airflow, uh, and dry airflow. But also, we, part of the alternates was to kind of wrap the steel, because the steel actually absorbs heat and, and so that, that temperature crosses that steel beam that's sticking into the soffit. By insulating that steel beam, it then creates a nice, uh, dry, uh, soffit area, so that's all I had.
And that's also going to help a little bit with our, I realize that there, we have a lot of issues with our heating flows and that kind of stuff, and that also dates back to when this was built, but that should help with that as well, having some insulation on that steel.
Definitely.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Rock salt purchase proposal.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to recommend to the village board to approve the state of Illinois, uh, approve the state of Illinois rock salt joint purchasing contract, twenty-two dash four sixteen CMS dash BOSS four dash P dash forty-three oh forty-five, with Cargill Incorporated Salt Road Safety of North Olmsted, Ohio, for amount not to exceed three hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars, and to recommend approval of pricing document, two-one-four-four dash oh-seven oh-one-one, with Morton Salt, Inc. of Illinois, for amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, four forty-four.
Okay.
And, uh, this is, uh, as I recall, it's, it's above budget, correct? Because rock's gone up so much, but this is still way cheaper getting it through the state, correct?
Yes, we're, we're utilizing the state contract, because the pricing's similar to Morton's. Uh, it's just a tad bit higher, but, um, but we also have Morton as a Plan B, uh, in case there's any problems of salt, uh, coming through their contract, because we know the supply chain is, is very difficult.
And, and we, as I recall, we filled up our bins last year at the end of the year, because we knew pricing was going to go up. So we got it at a lower price, so that was good thinking, good planning, and, uh, so thanks for that.
Yeah, this would be for, uh, end of this, uh, snow season, if we're running out or, uh, preparing us for next year as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Just curious, how much, how much, oh, like, increase is it year over year, just for my own understanding? Maybe fifty percent more than last year, just, uh, you know, ten percent more?
Um, it was around fifty-five, from my recollection.
More.
And now it's about, uh, seventy range, so.
Talking per ton.
Oh, per ton.
Gotcha, seventy-three, I saw seventy-three per ton, and a fifty-five per ton before that.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a supply chain as well. Uh, where are they going to get the salt from?
Over thirty percent.
And this is, so with salt, it all really kind of depends on what happened the previous year. So some years, I remember, per ton was something like seventeen dollars. And then there was that one year where nobody could get salt, because the Mississippi froze up, where it got to something like a hundred and thirty dollars per ton. So it is a, it is a really, uh, uh, variable, uh, commodity.
It keeps though, I mean, it keeps from year to year, I mean, how many years, if we add too much this year, we, we keep it for next year, and how much can we handle? And, and wherever we store it, and can it last for?
And it's stored in a dry area, so we can ha, we can store it for quite some time. As long as we fill up, we can only put it as much as we can hold.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
And that's why you have the backup with Morton, in case, you know, you run out of it quickly for some reason, you know?
And we have a max, uh, in the contract with the state, uh, so, um, we, that's our estimated amount that we'd be using. Um, but they can, if you want to try to use them, you could, you could get more salt, but it's negotiable rate at that point, and prices get even worse.
Sure.
So Morton, having that Morton as a backup, uh, utilizing the Cook County contract is a good deal.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Orland Park Health and Fitness Center membership fees.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to recommend to the village board to approve a membership fee increase of one dollar per billable member to the Orland Park Health and Fitness Center effective January one, twenty twenty-three.
Second. And this was all, uh, a hundred percent approved by the rec advisory report, correct?
Hundred percent.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So, no, no issues in general with an increase that would keep us in the black. Um, however, I noticed that the margin of the proposal is just at, like, zero point two percent, we're, we're just skimming it. So, and that's, that's assuming that we've correctly guessed the as-needed contingency for cost this year. Um, so I, I guess I had two thoughts. One is, non-resident fees are roughly twelve dollars difference in current and the proposed. You know, would, we possibly want to consider a two-dollar increase to non-resident fees to bring us closer to the twenty twenty-two net outcomes? And then, and the other side, the second question I have is, I was looking at the college student participation rates. Currently the lowest rate, despite being the lowest, um, uh, participation rate at three percent. I don't expect an answer on this tonight, but I'm just, I'm curious about the conversion rates of, of college students to the individual plans later on, and just wondering if we should maybe consider bringing them more in line with the senior rate.
Can definitely check on the conversion rates. Um, as the non-resident rate goes, and it would certainly be up to the board. Um, a lot of the non-residents we draw from quite a distance from the village, and, and it is good revenue for the village. I think they're only about twenty-three percent of the total, uh, membership. It would be up to the board if they want to do that work. Last year, we increased the rates two dollars per billable member, so we're trying to be price sensitive, but again, two dollars per member is not a lot.
Any other comments? Make the motion if you'd like.
So I, I would move to amend, uh, non-resident fees to increase by two dollars, um.
For, for the individual?
For, 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 for all for twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Well, some of them go up by two and three already.
Two-dollar increase per member based off the plan, so that's, that's what I understood for the.
Per billable mem, per billable member.
Correct.
Okay. So you motioned it, trustee Katsinas seconded it. Any comments on the two-dollar increase for non-residents?
Just a question, I mean, has there been, you know, over the years complaints or comparisons, people saying that, you know, the customer, you know, a member saying that it's too expensive, or I can go over here, and, you know, that kind of thing, do you hear?
I mean, the, the membership there is certainly more than sports flex, but it's a, less than a competitor like Lifetime Fitness. I think anytime you get an increase, you know, I'm, I'm a member there myself, people don't know who I am, you're in the locker room, people are always complaining. I mean, I think that's natural that people complain about any increase, you know, inflation or anything, but it, it is a pretty small amount to increase.
I mean, I like the concept that, you know, when you live here, you get a better deal, and, and I don't mind that being, you know, what, what, trusty camp is talking about, having a, you know, wider separation, uh, but just, you know, again, you, we're trying to make it profitable, so we want members, uh, at least, not even profitable, just break even, so, thanks.
Well, inflation's up almost ten percent, so that would be a seven-dollar increase, so I don't think we're, I mean, going up two percent or one and a half percent, I don't think is crazy. Um, so.
Agreed, agreed.
Any other comments on the, um, the amendment? Call the roll on amending it to two dollars for the non-residents.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Water meter replacement program communication.
Point of order, we still have the.
Yeah, we still have, we still have the, uh.
The original motion, yes, I thought, okay.
Any other comments on the original motion? So call the roll on the amended motion that is, uh, that changes the, uh, non-residents by two dollars rather than one.
We just did that.
No, that was the amendment, now.
Written the original.
Call the roll on the motion that, the amended motion for two dollars, uh, for the individual, uh, for non-residents.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Am I going to have to start saying the question is put and all that kind of stuff for you?
No.
Can we kind of stay informal here?
We had two dollars here, then we had two dollars here, so it was two, two dollars. Uh, water meter replacement program communication plan.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, it's just discussion.
Good evening, Mayor.
Take it away.
Uh, I have, uh, one slide to kind of brief you on our communication plan. Uh, this communication plan was developed, uh, with the help of Navia and her team, as well as finance, Baxter and Woodman, as well as PMI, our contractor, who is going to be installing the meters. Tonight, we're just going to go through some of the communication plan, so that you're familiar with the process that we'll be doing over the next couple of months. In early December, uh, we'll be doing our initial program, uh, announcement, uh, for a letter to all our residents to inform them about the program and the project, uh, that's coming up. This way, as we layer, uh, the next steps, um, they feel comfortable with what's coming up next. Um, later, uh, early in December, then also, we'll be doing some website, uh, information on the water, um, replacement project, uh, as well as social media campaign. Um, so the webpage will include informational video, uh, frequent ask questions, and then other relevant information on the project. And so this will help just residents get familiar more about the project here in, in early December. In mid-December, uh, we will be then, uh, the, the project is actually broken into six zones, and so we'll be announcing to the first zone, which we actually are choosing Zone Two, which is on, why do we need to choose one? But what Zone Two is, it's got the oldest meters, uh, that we have on record, so we're going to use Zone Two, uh, to start. And in that notification, PMI will now be involved, Professional Meters Incorporated, and they will actually be sending out postcards, uh, with the language to say, please sign up. Sign up to get your meters installed. And this, uh, postcards will have the, the village logo on it, plus their logo, so they know that they're working for the village, and then they will then, uh, send this postcard out. They'll wait about two weeks. If they're not getting people to sign up, they'll send a second, uh, postcard, uh, encouraging them, more stronger language, just go ahead and sign up. And then finally, a third postcard, uh, say, again, another two weeks, uh, to just encourage folks to go ahead and get, uh, in that zone, uh, their, their meter replaced. Uh, at the end, uh, we'll get, let, a final notice of warning, hey, uh, you really need to get this, and that will come from the village, uh, to provide that information to the residents. Now, uh, how residents will be able to, uh, really sign up is both, uh, they can call a call center, or they can also do a website appointment, uh, request. So depending on what people like to do, it's, both are available. And then, uh, Public Works will be working with, uh, having some, uh, pop-up signs that, in that zone, in the, in that, in the area, so that they're, hey, uh, water meter replacement program is ongoing in your area, please sign up. Go to this webpage, or, or call this number, so that that is another way, as they're driving in and out of their areas, that they can see that sign and kind of know that it's, it's time to go ahead and sign up for that. And once we've finished, uh, with the particular zone, we'll then go ahead and start opening up to this, uh, third, uh, first, and third, fourth, fifth, and so forth, uh, with the different zones in the village. We're anticipating this project taking approximately about two years, uh, to get through all the zones, um, and then we kind of, uh, wrap up at the end of there. Um, a couple of things we also wanted to highlight is, um, PMI's notification process. They, they always try to, uh, make sure that when somebody signs up, they call them ahead, just let them know, hey, we're, we're going to come. We got you scheduled on this, just want to make sure you, somebody's available. If, for some reason, the customer completely forgot about that appointment, they'll put, hey, we missed you, please go ahead and reschedule, and we'll get back to your home. Also, um, for continuous, uh, information for us, they'll be tracking all the communication, uh, going back and forth with the residents, so in case there's any kind of dispute of when they were scheduled, it's all tracked, and so we, we can say, well, apologize, we didn't know that you were not home, but we'll try to reschedule accordingly. And we also want to care about our residents. Uh, if they ask for, um, a mask, uh, the, the people who will be installing it will, will, will wear, wear a mask, or, um, if they want their shoes, they want dirty their floors, they'll put booties on even, uh, to cover their shoes when they come into their home. And, uh, they'll, all of them will have a, a badge, uh, as well, knowing that they're part of the village, so that they know they're working for a village. We don't want any scams to occur, um, during this process, so that is our communication plan.
Can we make sure that on the website, we have a, a concise, one-pager that we can link to through our own social media that we have, which isn't necessarily village, but we can link to it, because this is pretty important to communicate with the residents, say this is happening? So let us know specifically what, what area the zone is, because Zone Two means something to you, but it means nothing to the rest of us. So what part of the village that is, so people can be on the lookout for it, or they could even be proactive about it. Also, how that scheduling process is going to work? And then it should also include that they, that, um, all of the folks that are coming there should have booties on their feet, they should have, but badges, so that you can't be scammed, right? And that, um, also that if they, um, you know, that if you request it, they wear a mask, they'll wear one, just, you just have to let them know. But they're not going to wear one if you don't request it.
Okay.
But they're happy to wear one if you do.
You made it Saturday, maybe I missed it, do, do you put it in there somewhere, like, how long it's going to take, like, you know?
Yes.
It'll be in your house, you know, an hour and a half, tops, blah, 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 just so they know.
Yeah, it's part of the, the FAQs, it's approximately about an hour, uh, at worst case.
You have to, you have to go inside, right, I mean, I don't know anything about it, you got to go inside.
Most of it is inside.
Yeah.
There's a, there's few meters in pits, but that, those will be, uh, done separately.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
Joel, is there any way you could have, like, a village identifying badge, too? You know, because this is.
Yes.
Right for utility scammers, you know, knowing that this is going on in the village, so seniors and people that aren't really aware, maybe something that, you know, in addition to the company badge, but like in Orland Park, something.
Yeah, Orland Park's, uh, logo will be on that badge as well.
It will be on it, okay.
They've submitted the initial, uh, badge layout, and we're reviewing that currently.
Okay, and then let residents know it must have the official Orland Park logo, that is the contractor.
Correct. Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll have that on the webpage as well, so they, they can see that. And, and letters.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Just two quick thoughts, are these postcards being sent with the water bills, or are they separate?
Separate.
So would, would we want to include any sort of notification with the water bills as well, just knowing that that is something that we know that they will receive and open?
We.
We'll put it in the water bills, and we're also going to put it in, um, this upcoming village newsletter. There'll be a, a number of pages on there.
Okay, yeah, I, I've, good call. Uh, the winter newsletter will have a lot about our water redundancy and security, and, uh, have articles about that as well.
And last thing, or another thing on the scamming potential is, um, ensure that they know to, exactly how they're supposed to schedule it through the village. So which website, which phone number, so that if somebody calls them or something like that, that it's, that, you know, they know exactly who, who is supposed to be contacting them.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
The only other thought I had on this, too, is, you know, just January, a lot of folks like to travel to warmer climates, smarter folks than myself. I, I'm wondering if code red might also be leveraged, just because we know the phones will travel with them.
Great idea. Let's see how we can, uh.
Over-communication here is, is, uh, much better than under-communication in this case.
Yeah, we, we have seen in water billing, some folks have gone to electronic, and they don't often read.
Right.
But, uh, it doesn't hurt to, um, let them notify. Any other, uh, recommendations? Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
Roadway grant funding, engineering department's presentation.
I just want to, uh, queue up for, uh, Krishid. What he, Krishid's gave you a kind of a sneak peek at our budget workshop, but, um, I really want to thank Krishid and, um, the engineering department. As the board may recall, with the board's support, uh, engineering was created as a standalone department a few years back, and, uh, I think you're going to be really impressed with his presentation here and the amount of grant funding that Krishid and his team have been able to get for the village. Um, and then, and if the board may recall, um, we do a lot of phase one, and, and, and just for anybody that's listening, there's three phases typically in an engineering project, and we usually eat the cost for the phase one, even if it's not our project. But that's an investment, and that investment is paying off, and then Krishid can, can give that information. And so people understand, a lot of the time, our investment in the phase one, we have to, um, match funds anyways for these projects, so the investment that we put into a phase one counts towards that investment, whether we did it in phase one or the construction, but it really jumpstarts the process, so that we do get construction funds in these grants.
Thank you, George. So we'll, we'll talk about some of, mostly of what are roadway projects, but some of them, I would also call it as a capital project. So these are the six items that I will talk about today. So I just want to take a couple of slides about what is our approach for grant funding. So what we do in our department, we typically identify a project, and then we look at, does it qualify for any of the grants that might be available? And we look at local, state, and federal, all kinds of grants that might be available. And then we look for, of course, village manager's office, as well as the board of trustees, that they will approve that project. Once we get that approval, then we start actually phase one, just like George said. Uh, just to give you an idea, and Mayor is very familiar about that, that most municipalities don't come of, with, for a grant application with phase one completed. Most of our projects, we go in, either we are in phase one, or we have completed phase, uh, one already. And then we proceed, of course, to phase two, and then when we are applying for phase two, we also apply for phase three, which is a construction observation services, as well as construction. The advantage of that is that it allows our project to be more visible to the decision-making officials at various grants and grants agencies. Next slide, please. Um, and of course, once that is done, then we secure phase two, phase three, and construction funding, and we start the project. One more thing which we do is that, George, like George said, we have twenty percent obligation in most of our grants that we have to, the village has to pay. So what we do is, we look for other grants where we can get that twenty percent down to even possibly zero, zero dollars, if possible, which is in some cases possible, but not always, but it does allow to reduce our, uh, share of the financial contribution for the project. Next slide, please. So what I did is, I divided, to give you a history about where, how much money we have collected, where we are today, and five years' future look into it. So from two thousand and six to two thousand and. So from 2006 to 2016, the reason we chose 2016 is I joined the department, the village in 2017, so this is just before us. So in those 10 years, we collected about $2.3 million in various grants, and these are the dollar values that we received in those years. This is the timeline when we were here at the village from 2017 to today. And you can see that the grant into 2017 is basically towards the end of the year, I joined the village in October of 2017. So I didn't have much to do with that 2017. But you can see 2019, we didn't get, get any because of the pandemic, be, all of the grants were rolled either not provided or they were rolled into other years or other projects. But that's the, you can see in the last five years, the village has collected over $15 million in various grants. And in the few, next few slides, I'll show you those details as well.
Does that include the ones we just got last week?
Uh, no, Mayor. So the last week that we got, it will be used in 2023, so that's in the next one. So this is what we, our future look for the 2023 to 2027. We have secured $9.5 million and Mayor, that $2 million that you're referring to, it is included in this number here. And we also have another $13 million that we are hoping that we're going to get. The reason I'm showing you these $13 million in red is typically when a project is going through public hearing phase, which is what most of our projects are going through now, generally we get funding. I cannot guarantee you that because we already received the $2 million from STP, so I don't know if they have reasons to not feed to one village too much, too many dollars, I can't speak for that. But that is what we have in the next five years, we are lined up for 22 mil, or almost $23 million in various types of grants. Of those, almost $10 million we have already secured. So next slide, this is what you can see where our dollars came from. I've highlighted like two of them, Surface Transportation Program, STP. So far, we have secured $16 million from STP and we have about $8 million that are lined up for the next five years also. After that, you can see there are various types of numbers. MWRD has two, $3.8 million, 2.6 from Rebuild Illinois. But we also have $7 million that we're hoping that the Congress or the Senate will approve it and we will get that $7 million, that $7 million we have lined up for 143rd Street from west to southwest end. And you can see other numbers there. So we, we go after every dollar that might be available, or as small as it can be, or as large it might be available. Next slide. So we have heard this, and people have said this, that we have been so far very successful and there's some points that I wanted to share that with you. Of course, without leadership from the village and administration support, we cannot get this done. And one most important part that I want to personally thank to our staff that is here today, Sean is here in the office, Scott is here in the, in the room, and Diana is here. They are an extremely strong team that we work together. We identify projects, we identify grants, and we go after as a team. So I really truly want to appreciate the team that is here. Without their help, this would be not possible. Then we also have made some extra personal efforts. We go out and meet with various agencies. Myself, I have standing meetings with Cook County, we meet at least twice with MWRD, we have contacts at STP, we, we nurture those contacts, nothing to, to take advantage of, we just want to know when is the right time to apply for the project, what type of project they have priorities for, things like that. Those are the details that we look for. And then, of course, I'm going to repeat that, without phase one funding upfront, we wouldn't be this successful. So definitely, the board has supported that idea, we have been investing in that and it is, it is paying back pretty good. But on top of that, we also are willing, our willingness and ability to pay that 20%. You know, when we get a $10 million project, oh, sorry, fund, if that is what it is, we are on the hook for $2 million. So we are fortunate in that regard that our, our village is able to pay that 20% and that definitely helps us in moving forward with the project. But beyond that, I think some of the things that we have already mentioned, I will also say that, that we literally hunt for grants. I showed you the list before, but we definitely hunt for grants. And one more thing, like George says, we have to work for these, like DCEO grant, it's a $180,000 grant, but I'm working over two years on that grant just to complete the paperwork and then paperwork and more paperwork. So no complaint to that at all, but you, you have to work for the grants to be able to achieve those. Another example for RAISE grant, we didn't get that this year, but we collected 17 letters of support from close by municipalities, churches, schools, other government agencies, Will County. So just, just to show you that, they, they require effort. And we just had another debrief on RAISE grant, we didn't get it, but hopefully our next application for RAISE grant will be stronger than what it is this year because we learned some of the details that they prefer. So I shared with that. So next few slides, Mayor and everybody else, it's up to you how much time you want me to take on it, but I want to take you project by project so that you can take a look at it, where our investment is going and where we need to put some more money. 147th Avenue is completed, it's all done. We received $1.8 million for that project. So the roundabout that you see in front of the village hall, it has almost $2 million in grants. Next slide, please. This is our, next, this is what Mayor, you were referring to, we received a letter last week that we were, we secured $2 million in grants. So which it means that in 2026, we will be building our fourth roundabout in the village. I mean, we have $2 million secured, the rest will have to come from the village, but we are also actively pursuing other grant opportunities that are out there to bring our number down even more. So I have a doctor friend here who's not in this room, but he, I'm going to tell him that we're building our fourth roundabout.
Dentist rent.
Dentist rent. So, Joel.
Fourth or third?
So the third one is an Orland Ridge that is built by them, but it will be owned by us.
All right.
Next slide, please. So Will Cook Road to Wolf Road, this is a $15 million project. We have $1.3 million in grant funding available. The challenge is that the project costs $15 million. We don't have that kind of resource that, that has to come from IDOT. Yes, Mayor?
Have you gotten that to State Senator Kern and State Rep Turkin?
We have.
You've gotten that information?
Yes.
And they're, and they're trying to schedule a higher level IDOT meeting?
Yeah.
All right, let me know if I need to follow up, because that's in their new district. Yes, you will, we, another phone call is going to help. I'll be happy to make it.
So on that, most of you already know, we also already have offered IDOT that we will be willing to go for a jurisdictional transfer if they build this roadway, which we haven't heard yet. But officially, we have made that letter over two years ago.
Krishid, can you just explain the jurisdictional transfer for people that are watching?
Sure. So jurisdictional transfer is a mechanism that IDOT has where they put, build a roadway section with the condition that once it is built, the roadway ownership will be transferred to the local municipality. The advantage of IDOT has is that this way that they are not responsible for maintenance of this roadway ever again. So just like east of La Grange Road, 143rd Street, that's what was done about 15 or years or so ago, that was an IDOT roadway and now we own it and we are responsible for its ownership and maintenance. So that's what the challenge is. One reason I want to show you some of these slides is like for phase three, we have a million dollar. But if the construction fund does not come through, we cannot use this million dollar. So if they don't give us the money, there is a loss of a million dollar that is already secured through STP.
Got it.
Right. Next slide, please. This is, as Mayor always said, this is our highest priority project. Wolf Road to Southwest Highway, project cost is $60 million. We have those funds that we have secured, as you can see up above, $5.7 million that we have available for the project over, by 2027. But the project is $60 million. If the, if IDOT does not put in that money, that, all of that money, not all of that, I'm sorry, the four, construction money for $1.5 million is at stake. The rest of the money, we will use it because we are currently in phase two and we will use it. Construction date is not available, I cannot speak for that, I think we all have enough information. We may divide this project again if we get smaller pieces of funds so that we can build a portion of it. Next slide, please, again. This is that Congress money that we are waiting for, that it, hopefully it will get approved, $7 million if it comes through. Our intent would be that we will put in the rest of the money and build the roadway from West Avenue to Southwest Highway. But with the condition that IDOT will consider our share as our share when the full project comes through. We will make sure that those things are done in writing, but hopefully this one will come through and we will reduce the section of roadway that needs to be built.
So the $60 million includes this, we'd be taking part of that off.
Correct. If that's, if we get this and then we put our own money, Mayor, then probably we'll drop that number by 12.
Okay.
So then we will need about 48. But this will be a really good move in that direction, that the section of the roadway will be built and it will put more pressure to various grants and funding agencies to give us the remaining money so that this rest of the, it could be built. Next slide, please. This is a project that we finished. We got grant from CMAQ and it's done. The signal progression from La Grange Road to Wolf Road, it's, based on the modeling that we have done, it is better than what it was before. But when the section will be built, portions of this project will be saved and it will be, yes, it's a few hundred thousand dollar savings, but it will be a saving in the project. Next slide, please. Okay, this project is in the phase two design. This is two project, we intentionally divide that. This is the project that is at 143rd and John Humphrey Drive. We want to improve that intersection. We also want to replace the westbound approach of that bridge that is currently sinking. Many of you have experienced it. So we divided this project into two sections because each section is about four, four and a half million dollars. A grant for $9 million out there is very difficult, so we divided this project into intersection improvement as long, as well as dry land bridge improvement. So we have significant dollar committed in 2025 by STP for the intersection, but we do not have any dollars available as of now for the dry land bridge. We'll see how that goes, but you can see so far for that project, we have overall collectively approximately $4 million sitting for us to use. Next slide, please. Ravinia Avenue to West Avenue, this was a project that was completed this year. This is actually a very good example of dividing a project into two because by doing this way, we were able to get an additional $700,000 that would not be possible because STP had the cap on that, that project at that time where construction, as well as construction engineering was capped at 2 million. So we divided the project into two, got the full 2 million for the roadway project, then got another $680,000 for our roundabout. So it was a good success in that regard. Project is complete, next slide, please. Okay, so Wolf Road and widening, I'm not going to take much time, this is a $100 million project. We have about $2 million secured. We might not be able to use it because of the value of the project at $100 million. Next slide, please. 104th Avenue, it is currently being bid. It came out over budget last time, we readjusted the budget, but we have about $2 million in, in this project, which we will use starting next year. Next slide, please. 108th Avenue, again, it's a small project, $150,000 is secured and it will be used with that project. Next slide, please. Same thing on this one, 167 multi-use path, we have 200,000 available, we're waiting for $1.5 million to be approved. If that comes through in 2024, then we will be building that project as well. Next slide, please. McGinnis Loop, same numbers, you can see, 148,000 is secured and about $1.7 million we're waiting for it to be approved through STP, we'll keep you posted on it. Next slide, please. 82nd Avenue, same scenario, we're waiting for about $1.7 million in approval from STP as well. Next slide, please. Tonne Creek Erosion Control, $3.8 million is secured, we're in the design phase, we're towards the end of our design, hopefully by the middle to late part of next year because of permit issues, we will be starting this project. We have 3.8 from MWRD. Next slide, please. Cook County Infrastructure Maintenance, we have 500,000 that we will use for various road, various infrastructure that belongs to Cook County, but we will use our staff and our expertise to take advantage of that. Next slide, please. T-Connection Main, Main Pump Station, we have 180,000, we are working on some details with Oaklawn, we'll wrap that up hopefully in the next few months and it will give us a redundancy of our main pump station. Next slide, please. This is a resurfacing project that is, as funds are secured, in fact, Joel just told me that last week it was issued for bid and we expect to start construction next year, about $1.2 million is available from this, this source. Next slide, please. 151st Street, 94th Avenue to Harlem, it's a resurfacing project, it is not, the funds are not available yet. We will apply for this project or this grant again next year and see what happens, but our overall cost for this project is $3.2 million. Next slide, please. 143rd Street, 95th to Harlem, total cost is about 5 million and about $4 million is what we are going to go after for grants through STP sources. Next slide, please. These are the other roadways that are in the village, but they're owned by Cook County, so we do not have any control or say in terms of when they will be repaired or maintained or replaced, but they are part of the roadway system.
And we are pushing for 104th Avenue, right?
We definitely are pushing, I believe, next year, we should be seeing some activity on 104th. Not sure, but that's what I've heard. Next slide, please. The other grant applications, just wanted to show you, these, these are the other grants we have applied for, we're waiting to see what happens to those, we don't have the answer yet, we will keep you posted. All of these are I-TAP funds and we're waiting for their answers. And these are just some of the grants that we went after, but we didn't get it, just wanted to show you that where we are a success as well as where we didn't get the grants as well. Next slide, please. That's the presentation I have.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trust the Radacevsky.
First of all, thank you very much for all that you're doing to get that funding, I appreciate it. So thank you to you and your team for doing that. I know it's a lot of work, researching and jumping through hoops and a lot of follow-up, so I do appreciate that effort. I have a question regarding, you, you were saying about the, the funding and so you have from Will Cook Road to Wolf and then west to Southwest, but what about from Wolf to West Avenue? That, it seems like there's like a gap there.
Well, Wolf to Southwest Highway is covered, covers Wolf to West Avenue.
But in the presentation, it said from west to southwest.
So we have, we have two projects we're talking, one is from Wolf to Southwest Highway, but then we are also, so that is our large, that's $60 million, that's that project.
Yeah.
But then I mentioned from west to Southwest, that's about a $12 million project, if we get that 7 million, we can add our own money and then finish that project. But the Wolf to West, which is about $48 million, that will still stay there.
So it's two separate?
Correct.
Okay.
So you have three separate projects?
Correct.
Intersection, then the intersection to west, you know, the intersection and then west to Wolf and then Wolf to Will Cook.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying. And then I had another question, so I should go away from here. What is a dry land bridge?
Dry land bridge. So the bridge that you see on 159 that is currently being built, where you don't see the bridge is up in the air, it's actually, still is a bridge, but it sits on the ground. So I wouldn't say it sits on the ground, it has columns and beams and everything else, but you just don't see anything underneath it, it's just.
There's no water under it, it's just dirt. It, it's a bridge on the surface because you have bad soils, so they have to put supports underneath it so that you can have a road on those bad soils. And here in Orland Park, we have two kinds of soils, we have hard as a rock clay and we have peat.
Yes.
That's it, we don't have any in between.
Well, thank you.
Is that right?
Basically a swamp, is what you said.
Yes, we have a lot of, yeah, we have a lot of swamp.
Thank you, Krishid and the rest of the engineering team for coming here, Sean, Scott, and Diana.
And I want to thank the engineering team for all your hard work and, and also Krishid, I know that you and I were part of that battle to, to keep things moving along in 17 and 18, so I appreciate all your help and all that as we were battling others to make sure that that got done. So, so thank you all for all your hard work to get all that done, it's made a big difference. And, you know, sure, it is a cost to the village, but. It's made a big difference and, you know, sure, it is a cost to the village, but most villages don't have the funds to be able to take advantage of it, so we should take advantage of other dollars whenever we can get it because as we all know, we have a lot of capital needs, so anything we can get to help offset that is great.
Sportsplex drop-in open gym and field.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to recommend to the board implementing a change to the sportsplex drop-in open gym and open soccer usage protocol to a requiring all residents and non-residents that are not a sportsplex member to obtain a recreation and parks ID. Said ID shall be updated on a yearly basis and to B require those under the age of 13 to be accompanied by an adult. A ratio of five children to one parent shall be permitted and C, after a thorough investigation, any individual under the age of 18 engaged in a fight that results in a police response will be banned from all village recreation and parks facilities until the age of 18 and shall be issued a municipal violation. And any individual over the age of 18 engaged in a fight that results in a police response will be permanently banned from all village recreation and parks facilities and shall be issued a municipal violation. Individuals involved in an altercation that does not result in a police response shall be subject to suspension. And D, the village shall retain the right to permanently ban any individual from all village facilities for life regardless of age if the actions of the individual warrant such action. And E, any individual suspended for one year or greater can reapply for reinstatement to the village manager after one year.
Second. Do you need to add anything to that?
Not really, that was kind of the meat of it all.
All right. So I know that the Recreation Board approved everything but the suspended for one year can reapply, correct?
Correct.
So that was a change that I made to this one year. I'm not sure if one year is the right answer, but I do know that, you know, a 13-year-old who gets in a fight shouldn't be banned automatically till they're 18. 13-year-olds do do stupid things. We all did when we were 13, so I don't, I don't have a problem suspending them for a period of time, but they should have an opportunity for reinstatement. So I'm, I'm open to whether that's a year or six months or what have you. And I think also even over 18, if they make a mistake, shouldn't be a permanent lifetime ban.
Trustee Reardon.
I have two different questions. One, who, who would handle that? Do you have a committee or somebody that would look at the circumstances and say, okay?
Yeah, a card initiates a behavioral report and then usually the assistant director, myself, George, we look at those and depending on the severity of it, it's an easy decision. Sometimes we go back and forth a little bit to make the decision.
If necessary, talk to the police department. This is a person who's, you know, been a problem before or never been a problem, the opposite is, you know.
Absolutely.
Secondly, what require, just so people know, what requirements will they need to get the ID if they're not a current sportsplex member? And just sort of, I mean, you know.
If they're a resident, they just need proof of age or proof of residency. So we, we do that already with the resident ID, so a parent will come in and they establish an account, prove residency. Your driver's license will establish residency.
And it's not an ID they'll carry, it's an ID that's just in our system, correct?
That's correct.
So they don't have, they're not responsible for carrying it. Back to the, the process and the board. So someone gets, you know, has an issue, do they have a right to be heard? Is there a due process where they get to be, have their case, their position heard?
Absolutely. We provide that opportunity if they want that.
Okay.
And we can codify that if the board so desires. We can actually get something into the city code, village code.
Yeah, I think, well, I think we should do that and I think also I'm, I'm open for discussion on whether one year or six months or, you know, what, what the board thinks is appropriate.
When they can reapply?
When they can reapply. Doesn't mean you have to give them reinstatement.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinis.
When they get the, when a non-resident gets an ID card, do they also sign a waiver like a member of the sportsplex would?
Yes, they will. For perspective on the suspension question, just to, to help you there, so we have had, we have been doing suspensions for years and this has become more formal because we're making some formal changes here. But currently, we do suspensions depending on the action of the individual that range anywhere from a month to a year. So we already are banning people up to a year. We have an occasion where a parent will call us and ask for that appeal. We'll have that discussion and then we'll go from there.
And that's, my question would be, do we give them some discretion? Because, you know, it could be in certain circumstances, you can come back and apply in a month, but other circumstances, it's so severe, we don't want to hear from you for a year.
I, I think we should, this is me personally and the board can comment on this, but I think we should leave it to your discretion for when they can apply, but no longer than a year. After one year, they should be allowed to reapply because we're talking about 13-year-olds and, and even 18-year-olds because again, they're not getting arrested. If it was so severe, they'd be arrested and handled in court and, you know, so a lifetime ban is, you know, is, is pretty extreme for, for something, you know?
Sure.
And, and I, since I've been here, I don't think we've done a lifetime ban. I think.
I might have done one. I don't remember the situation. We might have done one or two, but those would be the ones that we see that, that do rise to a higher level.
Right, but in here it says it would be a lifetime ban if the police are called and so it's not giving you the discretion. So I think, so my suggestion would be for, so I would entertain a motion to amend this to give discretion to staff on the length of suspension even if police are called and give discretion to staff for when they can reinsta, they can apply for reinstatement, but in any case, after one year, they should be allowed to apply for reinstatement.
So moved.
Second.
Sean? Yeah. Any comments on the amendment?
Just to clarify, nothing can go longer than a year. You, the longest you can.
It can go longer than a year.
But no, that is.
But they can reapply.
You, you have to be able to reapply within a year. You're not going to, you know, give someone two or three years before they can reapply. So you're going to get discretion in between all that.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll on the amendment?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radyshevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Can we also, can Ray just talk about the rollout?
Sure.
Part of the plan is to initiate this effective December 9th, so we'll do a heavy social media blitz as well as signage and notices to all our participants so they're aware of this. So we'll wait, we'll give them a notice period. We won't do this effective this weekend. We do want to start it by December 9th so that we can get ahead of the busy holiday season period when we expect participation to go up.
Can you likewise to the, similarly to the water meter rollout, can we have a link on our informational website so that we can get it out through our social media that this is going to be a change in policy? And kind of a summary of what the policy is, you know, real simple summary and, you know, when this is going into effect and why it's going into effect?
And before it goes out, we will.
And frequently ask questions.
We'll share it with the board.
Okay, great. And that way we can link it. Awesome.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Just a quick question. So when I think about, you know, with all of our facilities, kind of in my mind, what the standard of excellence is, is CPAC, right? So I, I did notice in this that we're, we're hearing a lot from staff supervisors, a certain level of disrespect. And I think we're covered under item D here as far as the, the right to permanently ban or eject. I just want to make sure our supervisors are empowered just as much as our lifeguards are, that if they're getting any sort of disrespect from individuals, that they can eject them, right? We, we still go through this process. I just, I don't want to wait until we're getting to the point where we have to call PD, so.
We actively do that now. In fact, we asked two people to leave last weekend.
Then it's answered for me.
Any other comments? Call the roll on the amended motion?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radyshevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Any non-scheduled citizens or visitors?
Nope. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radyshevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
We're adjourned, we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. 7:10.
Call the meeting to order, call and roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Riordan.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the November 7th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of November 7th, 2022.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Community Pride Award, Orland Park Pioneer's Super Lightweight Football Team.
Well, first I will turn it over to the board to see if they'd like to make any comments about the, about the football team. Anything? You can let the mayor handle this one. Okay.
We'll ditto what you say, I'm sure, so.
Okay. Well, so I want to congratulate all you, so we're going to start with the Super Lightweight Football Team, and you guys are, what, eight and nine?
Six, seven.
Six, seven, eight?
One, five.
So, some of you have heard this before, but I was actually play, I was actually on the first Pioneer Football Team, so I knew what colors to wear tonight. And, and I played in the first game, and I was, I guess I was probably eight at that time. So, way back, it was a very, very long time ago. So, but I was probably about your size. So, congratulations, I know how fun it is to win a championship. I was fortunate enough to win when I was your age, and won when I was in eighth grade too, for the Pioneer. So, I'm sure you guys had a great time, and you should all, all of you, should thank your parents, because bringing you to practice, getting you to practice, coming out to the games, how many bad weather games did you have? So they sat out in the rain and all that, so you should thank your parents for doing that. And also, thank all your coaches, because it takes a lot of dedication for your coaches to be out there working with you and, and teaching you football, and taking the time to be with you every, because every time you're at practice, they're at practice. And I can tell you as someone who coached, they're also sitting at home, working on practice plans and doing everything else, and working on getting, getting your games set up, and making sure all that's organized as well. So, so make sure you thank your coaches too. So with that, I'm going to call you guys all up here, and we're going to, we're going to take another picture up here. Your coaches are going to have certificates for you. And, you guys want to come on up?
You guys can come a little closer. You guys can back up a little bit if you'd like. Come back. Who's the five-year-old? Who's the five-year-old?
Hope they got the wide, wide ones for you.
You guys have to turn around.
So what I have here is a Community Pride Award presented to the Orland Park Pioneer Super Lightweight Football Team in recognition of being named the winner of the 2022 River Valley Championship. Congratulations.
Great job, guys, congratulations.
Foul the lead blocker.
There you go.
Played ten years of high school football.
Couldn't get enough of it, could you, baby?
Couldn't get out.
You're just too good, I couldn't get ready to.
Can you guys do this way a little bit? Do this way a little bit. That's good, that's good.
You guys come in just a little bit. This is, now you guys have been, how many of you were here last year?
All of them.
All of them. Close them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so these guys are veterans of this, they've been here before, so they've got a really good team. How, how many of you are going to play at high school?
Three or nine.
That's pretty timid.
I know.
So, so they've been here before, they've done, obviously they've won a lot of championships, great work. I know it takes a lot of effort to play football for as many years, how many of you guys have played since the very first, since you were six? Yeah, so you guys have been playing a really long time. So, sorry your whole team couldn't be here, but you guys want to come on up? So this one says, Orland Park Pioneer's Barcley Football Team presented in recognition of being named the winner of the 2022 River Valley Championship. Pull back, Kurt.
All right. Look right here. All right.
There you go, guys.
There you go.
I missed that goal. Thanks, Gordon.
Great job.
My son quit playing after two years, he goes, Dad, I'm playing travel baseball, I need a break.
Yeah, I don't blame him.
He never would have made it, you know.
Should we form all the clear? There's actually more room.
Accounts payable approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from November 8th, 2022 through November 21st, 2022, an amount of thirteen million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for November 10th, 2022 approval. Item B, elevated tank number eight and number 10 rehabilitation bid award numbers. Item C, traffic signal maintenance for village, state, county roadways renewal. Item D, village center soffit repairs, glazing replacement and exterior joint ceiling, ITB 22-048. Item E, rock salt purchase proposal. Item F, cybersecurity assessment contract amendment. Item G, Orland Park Health and Fitness Center membership fees. Item H, sportsplex drop-in, open gym and field.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to pull items G and H to the floor and approve items A through F of the consent agenda.
Second. Call and roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Because we amended them.
Was it called or when we wait for a motion?
No, just call it.
Orland Park Health and Fitness Center membership fees.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve a membership fee increase of one dollar per resident billable member and two dollars per non-resident billable member to the Orland Park Health and Fitness Center effective January 1st, 2023.
Second. Call and roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan. Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
What was the other one that was pulled?
An H.
H, thank you.
Sportsplex drop-in, open gym and field.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve implementing a change to the sportsplex drop-in, open gym and open soccer usage protocol to A, requiring all residents and non-residents that are not a sportsplex member to obtain a recreation and parks ID. Said ID shall be updated on a yearly basis, and to B, require those under the age of 13 to be accompanied by an adult, a ratio of five children to one parent shall be permitted. And C, after a thorough investigation, any individual under the age of 18 engaged in a fight that results in a police response will be banned from all village recreation and parks facility until the age of 18 and shall be issued a municipal violation. And any individual over the age of 18 engaged in a fight that results in a police response will be permanently banned from all village recreation and parks facilities and shall be issued a municipal violation. Individuals involved in an altercation that does not result in a police response shall be subject to suspension. And D, the village shall retain the right to permanently ban any individual from all village facilities for life, regardless of age, if the actions by an individual warrant such action. And E, any individual suspended for one year or greater can reapply for reinstatement to the village manager after one year. This is amended in Cow to also include a due process in which discretion would be given to staff, at which point a, a individual under the age of 18 would be permitted to reapply after one year.
And over 18 as well.
And over 18 as well.
So, so this was amended in, in the committee of the whole to include that staff will have the discretion to, on a, if there's a fight to, it doesn't have to be a ban for life, it can be a suspension of, of another length. Also, staff has the discretion to set the timeline for, for reapplication. In any case, the reapplication timeline shouldn't last longer than one year.
Second. Call and roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Ordinance creating a general TIF Interested Parties Registry.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Creating an Interested Party Registry for the downtown Orland Park TIF District.
Second.
George, you want to give us a summary?
Um, Mayor and Village Board, these, these four items are all procedural matters as part of the pending development of the downtown Orland Park. Right now, nothing here commits the, the village to anything. All this does is, the TIF Interested Parties Registry is a, is a procedural requirement for the TIF. The next two are reimbursement resolutions that are similar to what the board approved in June for the village. So, this would be for the potential developer. And the last one is just closing out two dormant SSAs that were never ever used. This will just be a cleaner process for the eventual creation of a TIF.
Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
A resolution declaring the village of Orland Park's official intent to reimburse expenditures from creation of downtown Orland Park TIF. We just did that, didn't we?
Oh, never mind.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to pass a resolution entitled a resolution declaring the village of Orland Park's official intent to reimburse expenditures downtown Orland Park Tax Increment Financing District, Edwards Realty Company.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Mayor Radiszewski.
Aye.
We're getting a motion.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. So, George, there's a mistake here in Legistar.
Okay, which one?
Well, so I believe that particular motion that was called was supposed to be for the village.
No, no, the village was recreated in June.
Okay, so we have two that are exact same motions.
Except that one is for the TIF and one is for the potential business district.
Okay.
So we just did the business district, right?
No, we did the TIF.
You did the TIF.
Okay, got it.
Okay. We just did the TIF just now.
Okay. A resolution declaring the village of Orland Park's official intent to reimburse expenditures downtown Orland Park Business District, Edwards Realty Company.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to pass a resolution entitled a resolution declaring the village of Orland Park's official intent to reimburse expenditures downtown Orland Park Business District, Edwards Realty Company.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Ordinance closing out and dissolving special service areas two and three.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance dissolving and abrogating special service areas two and three in the village of Orland Park.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Resolution determining the 2022 tax levy in compliance with the truth and taxation law.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to pass a resolution entitled resolution determining the 2022 tax levy in compliance with the truth and taxation law.
Second.
Any questions or comments? George, you want to give a summary?
Yes, so again, this is just another procedural one. It happens every year as part of the preparation for the tax levy. What the board will be approving here is the maximum tax levy that can be approved at our second meeting in December. You can the board at the December meeting can approve a tax levy that's less than this, but it can't approve anything that's more than this. And following with the village's policy, this proposed tax levy will see it is anticipated another decrease in rate. So we are trying to capture as much of the growth as possible that occurs in the village, but at the same time being mindful of the tax burden on residents and businesses. So the tax levy that will be approved is anticipated to reduce the tax rate again for the next year.
Trustee Reardon. So I understand in my brain, the tax rate will go down, but you're hoping the value of whatever we're taxing is higher so that for the right we're still taking in revenue that we need to cover our budget.
That's exactly it. Yep.
So that the average your home should likely see a decrease in the tax rate that you're actually the tax rate and the tax you're actually paying because we're capturing the growth of the new growth of the new construction that we've had. The problem, the reason we can't estimate it is because Cook County hasn't given us the tax bills yet, which is a whole nother discussion about how they held it so that it didn't play a part in elections, which is ridiculous. But that's what we're seeing. And you saw there in Frankfurt, it was 6.9% increase in value in Frankfurt. I don't know what we'll see here.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? You know, given that, you know, we're seeing the benefit of things being in arrears with the fact that the police pension is going to probably take a hit next year, so that one's going to hurt a little bit unless we see a recovery here in the next month. Because obviously, so we're going to have to fund it more next year. But this demonstrates just the fiscal responsibility of the village overall, still trying to keep our property taxes from our property, our property tax rates going down and we're a lower amount of the of the overall tax bill. We were 6.7%, I think, and we're down to 6% of the oral tax bills in the last five years. So we've continued to keep our, keep a lid on our costs relative to other taxing bodies, which is exactly what we try and do. So, but at the same time, we have, we also have real capital projects that we're having to deal with as well, so. And we'll continue to find other funding sources, just like we have with the grants that you saw earlier. Any other comments?
Call or roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16 raffles of Orland Park Village Code.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to pass an ordinance entitled an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16 raffles of the Orland Park Village Code.
Second.
And I believe Dave Manchester is here real quick to give us an explanation of this for Kiwanis Queen of Hearts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm Dave Manchester. I've been a member of the Orland Park Kiwanis Club, probably too long, probably when Keith was playing pioneer football. But over the last, oh, very, I'd say probably 15 years, we've been renting the Civic Center every Wednesday evening and operated bingo in that. That has become our primary fundraiser as the, for the Orland Park Kiwanis Club, which is a civic organization. In the letter that I sent to the mayor and to the village manager, I delineated what we've been spending our money on, essentially. We are very proud of the fact that we're about 99.9% effective as a charity. We, members pay any other expenses that we have, and the rest of it is distributed in this community, something we intend to continue to do. We started about a year ago, a Queen of Hearts raffle, which started out very slowly. I think for the first couple of weeks, I have with me Matt Claridge, who's the president of the Kiwanis Club, and Jerry Stoyber, who is the manager of our bingo program, is also a longtime member of the club. But it started slowly, just was going up $100 or $200 a week, but it has caught the imagination of a number of people in the community, and it has continued to grow in the size of the pot. And this is again, if you're familiar with these, which up until about a year ago, I was not, but that those are, it's a split the pot kind of a program. So we then recently learned that, oh my goodness, there's a code in Orland Park that says you're restricted to $100,000. Well, we're right on the cusp of that at the moment, so that's why we wrote with some urgency to the board, asking for an amendment of that. We had suggested a $300,000 limit. I think that the motion that's in front of you may be for $200,000. That's fine from our perspective. If we start to get into trouble with that, hopefully we could come back to you on that. One of the things that we had talked about, I know one of the concerns and the reasons you have codes such as this is to make sure that there is fiduciary responsibility on the part of the entity that's sponsoring something like that. It's something that we would be happy to open the books to you, to show you, to escrow funds if that's necessary, to ensure that that money does in fact stay in this community. And one of the things I think we'd also be interested in talking to the mayor, to the village board and others about is other ways that we can put this money to good use. You've seen the uses that we do use it for. There are other needs in this community, and that's what we're about trying to fund those. So we want to work with you. We're very pleased how successful this has been. There's a lot of enthusiasm among the people who are players both at bingo and some who just do this online. So that's why we brought this issue to you, and we appreciate the prompt response. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. As I said, the two associates are here with us as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, so, yeah, and I think the reason we went with $200,000 is because what we get concerned about is if it gets too large, is then it becomes a little bit crazy and, you know, because these things have gotten much larger than this in other communities, a million dollars. And then you see a lot of craziness at the Civic Center, which we don't want to have to try and control. So that's, that's why we've set it where we have, and hopefully by that time you'll have a winner anyway, so it won't matter.
And Mr. Mayor, also, if it gets to the point and the board does not want to increase it, then the way the ordinance is written is that they would then just keep pulling cards until there's a winner. Right now, there's just one card per week. They would just keep pulling until there's a winner then.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I have a question. So these are really great organizations here that you have listed. Thank you for putting this together. So you said that if we had ideas of other organizations to be a part of that, how would you go about that?
So if you, I mean, you bring your, if you're happy to be, or if you're, one of the things you started, one of the different volunteer groups to come work at our thing up to earn money for their charities, the center, or if they set up, or if they started to, like, just starting this month, and if you, you must name a contact person, get involved with them, and, right then and there. We have a large commitment, I mean, previous year, we've given about $10,000 roughly, and that very, very family needs, the different churches, the different, through 31. This year, because we saw our, and we're always, we're always in a period of all that, we always spend the money, and this year, this year, so we're always zeroing everything out. We lose that number to 20,000, and our biggest challenge is finding that one, that family, that family is finding that one. That was, we're trying to look at different groups and, that, the true need, the true need might, might just, or maybe might have, or, that's great.
And then how do you allocate the funds? I mean, how do you differentiate? I mean, come up with a dollar amount for this, this fund compared to a different one?
No perfect formula exists that I can play, but typically, when we do get requests, it is dollar specific in some way. You pay somebody $20, $30, $50, or simply a car purchase, somebody with a D, and all the gift that's worth, paying some medical bills, usually, we pay some medical bills we have here, that's a lot, a lot of attention. We work with a little healthcare provider, and actually, by the way, in the best, in that very light bill, we worked out paying half of it to the medical provider, or off the other half. We try to do those kinds of things, to get those people around. But we are, while you're already a mayor, a couple 30 members, and we do our very best to provide, to make sure we implement our best, generally, by, we, we.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
George, is, since your time being here, has anybody come with this type of request to raise it before? Has it always been $100,000 since you've been around? I mean, has it been?
Been 100 since I've been around.
Oh, has it been 100? I mean, is there?
Yeah, so it's, it's always, since I've been here, it's been 100. But in another community.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. I mean, Queen of Margers or one of the Catholic churches.
Cajun.
Cajun, it got to over like a million dollars.
In McHenry, I think it got up to 3 million.
Okay.
And it just became pandemonium for them because they had to have police, they had to have a lot of traffic control. So, you know, this, having a cap is kind of a normal thing. It's just the cap level is within the purview of obviously of the village board.
And again, I guess maybe my first part of the question wasn't clear. Has any other, like either, you know, local church in town that does other types of funders, has anybody come to us over the years and said, you know, they're getting close to that at all either?
No.
Or they just don't ignore it and they go over that?
We haven't gotten notification.
Okay.
And I will say the disabled vets, I believe, has gotten to that limit and had, and drawn it multiple times, gotten to the $100,000, they didn't ask for a change. So I don't think they've gotten there very often, I think maybe once.
Yeah, and it's not just pandemonium for the, for the community, obviously, like, these are volunteer organizations, and so now you have to worry about cash handling and security and all those other things. So that's why I think having that limit isn't out of the ordinary.
Call or roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
ICIMS recruit onboarding software renewal.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the renewal agreement for subscription services for the ISIMs recruit and onboarding system for an additional year effective January 2, January 2nd, 2023 in the amount of $41,857.68, and approve and authorize the village manager to execute said agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Just, just to clarify again, the plan is to eventually move off of ISIMs because here we are again renewing. When's the estimated? When's the estimated year we don't have to renew again?
So we, there is two things that are pending right now, and our team is working on, is the human resource management component of the Munis upgrade is ongoing, as is the EPL for the Development Services. So with the human resource management, that will be live January 2024. And then also a component of that is the NeoGov component, which will replace this. But because of some delays that occurred in getting going on the HR stuff, there's, all of this is going to be delayed until January 2024.
Okay, so this should.
This should be the last one. Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Call or roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Any non-scheduled citizen visitors? Board comments?
Trustee Radiszewski.
Oh, yay. Wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you and your families enjoy the holiday. Also wanted to, you know, remind people, you know, obviously the following day is Black Friday, to, you know, be, be safe when you're out shopping, you know, be, be smart when you're out there. If you're in the parking lot and it's dark, have your keys in your hand, don't be looking down at your cell phone. If you're going to put items in the car, you know, put them in your trunk, don't leave them in the backseat where, you know, it's easily stolen, just kind of, you know, just think about your safety. I mean, it's a priority. And Black Wednesday, which is the day before Thanksgiving, happens to be the busiest day for bars. I think most people think that it's New Year's Eve, and it's not. It's actually the day before Thanksgiving. So there'll be a lot of people drinking and driving, so make sure that you are careful. And if you are drinking, please get a designated driver or call an Uber. Make sure you can drive. And that's it. Enjoy the holiday. Thank you.
Trustee Reardon.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, have a great week. I echo Joni's comments, be smart, be, you know, be, use common sense this time of year. I think that goes out the window a lot of times over this time of year. And then just quickly, the budget stuff, I wasn't making to the budget meetings, but I read everything, so that department, that was fantastic. Everybody that's come up today, and I just want to remind everybody what a great job you guys are doing. Easy to understand, very helpful, summarized well, important stuff that you make very easy for us. So thanks for doing a great job.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor, I only have three points to make in my, I think, but the first one is, I, when it comes to the taxation and all that, we've lowered taxes again, and what I like about it is that we lead by example. I don't know why other taxing authorities continue to raise their taxes, raise their taxes every year, every year. But, you know, we lead by example. It can be done, you can cut taxes. So that's, I'm very proud to participate in that. The other two items are two items, are two instances that I've been inspired of in the last couple, since the last meeting. I don't know if you forgot, but there was an election two weeks ago, and one of the, I had an incident outside of a voting thing where a lady came by and she was struggling to get to the voting thing. She was, you know, taking small steps and all that, and when I, I asked her if she needed help, she says, no, I'm going to make it. She says, I broke two bones in my back and I felt that I had to get here to vote. And I didn't get her name or anything, but it was just very inspirational that this lady goes to this extent to vote in an election, and yet we have a great percentage of people who could care less about it, it seems. So, but I found her, she, again, she leads by example and does the tough job and gets there and all that. This, and then the final point is that during the veteran, we, Veterans Day, where we honored This, and then the final point is that during the veteran, we, Veterans Day, where we honored the, all the veterans, we had that event at the Civic Center. And I saw, I saw another inspirational moment, too, where this young lady who was sitting next to me, I think her name was Joni, or whatever, and she got up about five times, despite her being injured and all that. She struggled to get up, to face the flag, to face, to, for the speaker and all that. Three, four, five, six times, she had to struggle to get up. It's that inner drive and all that that's just remarkable, I thought. And again, another lead by example. So Joni, I, I, not many people had the view I had, that, that you getting up there and making it happen, but, you know, it's an example for everybody to, to persevere, and, and sometimes things aren't easy. So that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Malani.
First, I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. I think we've covered that one pretty well. Stay safe, shop local. I'm looking forward, actually, to the tree lighting event on Sunday, November 27th, and our, and our parade. It'll start at 4:00, and it'll come down Ravinia Avenue to the Village Hall, where we'll light the tree at the Holiday Festival. Last year, we had a great turnout for it. That was our first one, so hope this one's even better. So looking forward to seeing everybody on Sunday. Thank you.
Trustee Katsinas.
I think Trustee Malani looked over my shoulder here, because he kind of stole my thunder. What I was going to say, I'm like, you're saying it exactly. First of all, I wanted to say what a, what a wonderful thing it was that the Kiwanis came here and made us aware of, you know, just how much of a community partner you are, and how many organizations you help. You know, I think most people, I think we could share this somehow. I don't think people playing bingo had any idea how much of an impact they're making. And thank you and your 30-some members who make all this happen. You know, during the holiday season, it's so wonderful to see organizations, locally based volunteers, doing so much to help so many other, you know, disadvantaged people in our schools, in our kids. So hats off to you, and thank you very much for everything you do. So with that said, I just, I'm also, he stole my thunder, so hope to see y'all at the parade. And please shop local and remember our businesses. You know, we have very large, big buck businesses, but we also have a lot of small businesses, you know, that are still recovering from the effects of COVID. So when you're thinking of spending, buying gifts, buying gift cards, please think of our restaurants and our small mom and pa, family-owned businesses. Thank you.
Trustee Compass.
For my time tonight, I'd like to recognize two employees for outstanding contributions to the village. Our HR generalist, Francesca Garza, has gone above and beyond this year in developing her skills and taking on additional responsibility. This is most noticeable during this year's open enrollment process, which is a notoriously busy and sometimes intense time for any HR department. Throughout the year, Francesca has consistently demonstrated a positive attitude and a strong customer-first zeal. Thank you, Francesca, for continuously promoting a positive environment, especially under intense times. Would also like to recognize a zoning coordinator in our Development Services Department, Allison Isguera. She's been with the village for three years, having originally started in the Finance Department. Allison's great customer skills, coupled with the willingness to work hard, while also developing new skills in municipal planning, brought her to be hired full-time as a zoning coordinator. Development Services by its nature can present many different challenges, I see Ed, I, I know he'll agree with this, and many shifting priorities. Allison remains focused with a positive attitude on the tasks assigned to her and, and completes them with high accuracy. She's also notably and proactively assisted coworkers where she can to increase the team's output. So thank you, Allison. And then lastly, while many of us are getting ready for this Christmas season, I'd just like to remind all residents that the village will be partnering once again with Toys for Tots. This charity, which has become an official nonprofit, public charity at the behest of the Marine Corps in 1991, it's celebrating its 75th year in bringing toys to the less fortunate. Please consider donating new unwrapped toys at five locations throughout the village. Here, at the Orland Park Police Department, Village Hall, the Cultural Center, Orland Park Sportsplex, and Orland Park Health and Fitness Center. All donations must be made by December 12th to get them to the children in time for the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. Yeah, I guess since the last, I kind of almost forgot, since, since the last meeting, there was an election. So, yeah, it was, it, it, you know, obviously, it was disappointing for me personally. It was, at a statewide level, it was very disappointing to me. I think they've already met and blown off any fixes to the Safety Act, which is what I predicted, and so we're going to be dealing with that. And it, I will also say, I'd also like to thank everyone in here who just, you know, just, obviously, none of you were involved in the campaign, nor should you be, but you all ran the village well, so that the village, you know, so that people didn't try to make the village an issue, which we know, there were plenty of FOIAs of people trying to make the village an issue, and they couldn't, because we have a great village. I, I will say, I met a lot of great people along the way. And we all, you know, obviously, I was in DC a lot, and we all see on TV, remember, there are 435 congressmen and women, and there are 100 senators. So if there's 535 people, you see 20, maybe, on TV all the time, and most of them are schmucks. Okay? Both sides, I mean, both sides, they're, they're, you know, the, the bomb throwers oftentimes. You know, for the most part, not all, but, but some. I mean, some are obviously in leadership positions and find themselves having to speak, but others, that's what they do. I will tell you, there are a lot of really talented people there as well, that are there for the right reasons. I would encourage you, I would encourage everyone, though, after what I've witnessed, not here, not just here, but statewide and nationwide, is you need to do some of your own research, because I will tell you as well, that the overwhelm, now, on, on the flip side, the press, the overwhelming majority are schmucks. Okay? There are very, some very good press people, but even then, they get a very limited time to, to get your information out. Right? And we know who does a good job. And, you know, Jeff here does a great job covering us, Mike Nolan does a great job covering us, John DePaola, who hasn't been here for a while, since COVID, but he covers us from time to time. They do a great job covering us locally. And so I would encourage you to look at who covers things locally and fairly, and it's not really hard to figure that out. Okay? And, you know, and I mentioned all three of them, because, you know, there are times that, during my tenure, where I really, they could have really embarrassed people who were opposing me, actually, and would have been okay to, and would have been factual in doing so, but they always went above and beyond to try and be really fair and not embarrass anyone. And there are press people who do that. It seems like they're just few and far between these days, and you really have to look for what it is. But the information is out there for you to make good decisions. And making decisions off commercials, I'm going to tell you, is not the way to make your decisions. Making, making your decisions off mailers are not the way to make your decisions. You know, you have, you know, in a national election, you've got, you know, maybe a dozen, dozen races or so, let's just take judges out, because there's no good place to get information. You can get that information by doing a little bit of digging. So I encourage you, as your civic duty, to actually take the time to do that, because there are some really good people. And you can, believe me, you can really quickly tell the difference between these, those people that are state reps, or state senators, or congressmen, because they can't hold another job, because they're not qualified to do anything else. And there's a lot of that in the state of Illinois, by the way. Compared to, there are a lot of, a lot of congressmen and women that I've met, that they could do so many other things. And they're taking a job that, quite frankly, isn't very glamorous, and it's a really hard lifestyle, back and forth, and they're running for office constantly. And they could do other things, and they're giving their time. So, you know, keep that in mind for, for the folks that are out there. And I will tell you, though, as disappointing as this is for me, the benefit of it all is I'm still mayor of a fantastic town. My hometown where I grew up, where I brought my kids back and raised them, which is a great town for them to be raised, it's their hometown, and, and Orland Park is, is still a fantastic community. We opened another 180 businesses this last year. You saw all the grant money we've been getting, all the things that we've been doing. We've been demonstrating, and to Bill's point, how to lead and how to do it right. There are other good communities in Illinois as well, but by and large, the 1,400 communities in this state could learn from watching us, and certainly the state could, as how we handle our finances, how we conduct our businesses, how we conduct things here, and, and how, and the transparency that we have by having everything on, on, on video and audio. So they could learn from us, and we, we set that example. And we certainly set that example, I believe, in Cook County. And from, from our crime, from our low crime, to bucking the trend of the whole county and the state, and all the businesses that we see coming here, even in, in spite of the fact that we are in Cook County and we are in the state of Illinois, which I can tell you right now, those are the two biggest impediments to economic development in Orland Park. Because if Orland Park was in a couple of other states, maybe one that starts with an FL or a TE, we'd be growing like gangbusters, and we'd just be, we'd be basically being, be able to be selective of who we take, because that's how many people would be coming to here. So, so we live in a great community, and, and please don't forget it. And, you know, things like, that since Election Day, Veterans Day, where we had just a phenomenal event yet again for Veterans Day, and all that we do for our veterans. We had our kids trot this last weekend. Our, our turkey shoot on Sunday. Sorry, I couldn't be there. I was actually at the Bears game, watching Justin Fields get cremated. We have our turkey trot on, on Thursday. So please come out, and I, I think we're already sold out on that, aren't we? So you can't come out, but you can come out and cheer people on, but you can't, but you can't participate. And then enjoy Thanksgiving. You know, it's, it might be my favorite holiday in the US, and really enjoy it. And, and then, don't forget that on Sunday, we have our Christmas tree lighting and holiday lights as well, and our holiday parade as well. So please come out and enjoy that, and hopefully the weather will be good for that. And then, of course, for those of you who have younger kids, you know, and for Kreshid, he can come see Santa Claus. So, so, so Santa Claus will be there as well, for all of you to come, to come get your requests for gifts. And other than that, have a safe Thanksgiving, enjoy it, have fun, and, and enjoy the holiday season that we have for the next, next month. And I think we have one more board meeting here. All right? Great. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performances, or dismissal of specific village employees; C, collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees; D, setting a price for sale or lease of village property.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Going to executive session.